Funny set up here, isn't it?
Anybody else want a drink?
How are you doing?
Fine.
I'm fine, thank you.
I'm going to leave it with Chris now, I've got to go back in.
Chris, can you introduce yourself?
I'm just about to introduce the members of the team. So, would you like to start, just tell us a bit? Actually, how long have you been on the neighbourhood plan team?
It seems like twenty-five years, but I'm the newcomer of this lot. Oh, no, apart from Janet, sorry. So, yes, I'm Nick Taylor, member of the neighbourhood plan steering group. With sort of particular interest in the housing one, I was on the housing working group before actually I came on to the steering group.
Are you?
It's been about a couple of years, I suppose, I've been on the steering group.
I'm just interested because I've never met you and I was appointed as a rep. Are you representing Oakham?
Yeah.
Because that's an interesting thing, there's nobody here from Barleyford.
Sorry, Nick Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much from Barleyford. Thank you Nick.
Nice to meet you.
I've been on this group since we started.
My course. Sorry. That's all I needed to know, thank you.
The beauty of the century. Since I've been on for three years on this group, I'd say, I think at the moment, I was born here and therefore that's one reason I'm on it. Because if I'm returning to this county, I should be doing this sort of thing a bit. And I haven't seen a few of those who've known the place for a considerable time, rather than say someone being here for forty years, you know. David Salke, S.A.L.K.E.L.D. From, I was there, been on this group since the day it started, volunteered. I left the airport, said Cottersmore, thirty-five years from the airport, and stayed at Oakham because I liked the place a lot. And it stopped me going back to North London, which I liked just as much. I was involved in many activities, everyone mainly communicating with the public, that's what I tend to do. And also there's sports and leisure activity, working group, which is quite interesting. So yeah, I've been on three years.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Clark, I chair the steering group and have done for the last eighteen months. Like colleagues here, I've been on my from the start. Prepared from this on this, when this wanted to focus more on the business and had other things thrown your hands, so I took over from theirs and I've been on since then. My interest in terms of the working group through it, working with Michael and Pericich and the open spaces, we've got a ton of it.
My name is Paul Gows, D.O.W.S.E. I've been involved in the group since the very beginning. First meeting in the west there. I guess my focus in the beginning was more around transport, transportation in the town. But since then, I've been involved in most senior group spaces and it's a history of Michael. So we've kind of learned in terms of what we've done. I also maintain the website, the Scottish Neighborhood Plan. And we have a driver documents store that we've got across there.
Thank you.
I'm Janet Hughes. I officially joined in the middle of last year. And I joined on to the letter in the newspaper, that's in front of the centre of the joy, so I came on. I signed the housing team, but this team had already done the post work, I told them by then. I think organised, helped organise three neighbourhood boards.
Thank you. I'm not sure how you want to play this, but we've got, you've seen a copy of the draft plan. And as I emphasised to colleagues of the council members, it was very much a draft plan. I know there were errors in it, typos and so forth, but I took the decision. How do you, colleagues? To think that we can sit back and agree. Time was possible to review the document, accepting the fact that there were typos and grammatical things that need to be sorted out. The idea was that it was important that you as councillors were able to see the document as soon as possible, so that you've got some sense of where we were going. And with that in mind, I wonder whether it would help us to know who you are? Because you are the councillors, so would you like just to, after I've, after they've got me on the last chair? Thank you.
I'm George, I'm a town councillor. I did three of your workabouts and wrote reports with management board. And management associate consultant, my boss, he's our history worker, so we've had some impact with the neighbourhood plan already.
Yes, very good.
And also with Paul, who works on the town council together. So I'm quite heavily involved with others.
I'm Peter Munnings, I'm the ending jurist.
He and I used to be on the Rockland County Council.
I was town councillor, well, I was on Uppingham, oh right, so I had an involvement in their first neighbourhood plan. So I've got some background there. As a county councillor for ten years, I now represent Oakham North West. You're my councillor, I guess.
I'm Zoe Neil, I'm fairly new to the town council, I've been here for about six months. But I grew up in Oakham, so it means a lot to me too.
Thank you. So, do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Adam, I'm a chairman of town councillor, been on the town council, I don't know, ten years? And obviously on the camp council and now I'm obviously on the neighbourhood plan. And when you come to getting feedback from the councillors or looking at what you want, I would recommend, by the way, that you go from left to right or right to left. And if you've put a time limit on it to make sure that everybody can capture their piece, then you can always revisit people's comments.
Okay, thank you.
Jean Danier, I've been on Oakham Town Council for about eighteen months. Came to live in Oakham about two thousand and fifteen, of our previous, so before that.
Where did you live before, Matt?
Loddington.
Thank you.
Joyce Lucas, I hate to say this, but I'm an ex RAF dependent. I hate dependent, I was never dependent, and I never will be. Oakham Town Council, three wardens, you name it, I've done it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul Buck's an Oakham Town councillor and a recent recruit to your group. I think I've been to about two or three meetings, just catching up with what you've done, basically. I didn't know much about it beforehand, and what do I do now, I'm not quite sure, but anyway.
Martin Brooks, as you know, that's all I'm going to say at this stage.
So, you've had a chance, I hope, had a chance to look at the draft document and I'll just emphasise it's very much a draft document. So to, oh, I have a suggestion, let's, sorry Martin, because I really love a lot to say.
No, because as I pointed out in the last meeting, my intention is to actually put it down in writing when it goes out to public consultation, because I felt very excluded from this plan. As a resident of Oakham, I find the way I've been treated by, let's say, people who have gone, perhaps even including some of you sitting at the table now. For instance, when it was brought to council that you didn't want me on the group and then I was unlawfully excluded. So my feelings are not good about it, but I have looked at your plan. I hadn't brought it with me tonight because I didn't want to go through and spend a lot of time on it, but I want to glean from what other people say. But a few comments that might help you get the idea, because to me, it's very dated in the sense that it's not very forward-thinking. Things like we can't have coffee shops in the town centre and just things like that. And this business, I don't believe you've looked properly at planning laws and things, because I've come a cropper on that. When you say that a property must remain empty for twelve months before any change of use, we can't say that. You know, we, you, if someone wants to change the use, there's European planning law, which I came a cropper of for Church Street, when all I simply said was, actually, people want somewhere to shop. They don't want an opticians, you know, it was, it would be nice if the place was changed to somewhere would benefit, they'd bring in shoppers into town. I was told I couldn't say that because of European laws of competition. So I don't think you've looked at all the proper rules and regulations when it comes to what you've written. And as for the history, I felt it was rather biased, in the sense, obviously, no offence to the gentleman there, it did seem to picture around a lot of Oakham School and being the major employer. But if you take some of the bigger employers in the town and take out of Oakham School the teachers, actually, there are bigger employers in the town, such as Rutland Plastics, RPC, and other people, Land's End, you know, so I could go on and on, but I, and there was a lot of repetitive cutting and pasting, and I'm finding it hard to see where the company that you've brought in has actually earned its money. We have eighty-two pages, I believe, of quite a lot of repetitive things. Section thirty-one, I think, was on there, if I remember from the top of my head. Doesn't even have anything written in it, you know, so to me, the money we've spent, and I'm told, well, it's okay because we haven't spent as much as Uppingham. I think we've wasted a lot of money, because this can't go out. We were told basically from certain people that we should just basically, not in so many words, rubber stamp it and rush it through for the referendum. But it can't be ready for this year, and it needs a lot of work and a lot more involvement, because you have figures in there, which is one of the things the independent assessor will pick you up, as you know Melton. And you've got things where you said you had an event, which I didn't even know about as a councillor of our working group, and twenty people turned up. That's not representative of the people of Oakham.
You obviously can't make people come to events.
No, but I think there should have been more support from the council to public. Yeah, but who reads the paper, really, the circulation is quite low, I think. When I went to Stevenage last year, Stevenage have done it, Stevenage Borough Council, a plan, every shop window in the town was plastered your plan and the advertising, no, I'm talking proper. Yeah, but you had little things, so I'm not saying that what you did for what was, it wasn't, it was on billboards in Stevenage, you know, it was, it just wasn't put there enough for the people. This may be not your fault, I think, I think like the fact that we've sat here this evening and some people don't know who we are, when you're a working group of the council, is a pretty poor show. And I think, I think that's where it went wrong.
So, that's right, you raised that, a point, I think, just to clarify the situation. There's a long process of implementation that now takes place. We have a draft plan, we want your feedback, we would encourage you to tell us what's missing, where you see changes, where you see additions or whatever. Because we want to make sure that we take your views into account when we draft, update the plan. The next stage is to, is to have what they call a Regulation fourteen consultation. This is where it goes to Rockham County Council and other bodies to get their input into our plan. We then get that back after six weeks and we, as a steering group, look at those responses and update the plan accordingly, or not. We've simply recalled our comments against each of the points that have been made. And during that period, we will also have at least two public drop-in consultations, one in Oakham and one in Barleyford. It may well be over that six week period, depending on my colleagues, if, we may have more. Once we've got the Regulation fourteen consultation, we look at the document and then we do some more work on the document and with Oakham plan, and then we go to what's called the Regulation sixteen consultation, and that is, it's now with people, but that's really where RCC, Rockham County Council, really look at the document and give their comments on the final draft as we see it. It then goes to, as you say, Martin, it goes to an external validator, data inspector, whatever. They look at the plan to see whether we follow the process that we should do. And in the light of that happening, we then would go for a referendum in Oakham and Barleyford. So we're talking about a period at the moment of about two months, six weeks, sorry, six, six, three, four weeks, a quarter, really, three or four months, before we go for a referendum. And it's only at that point when we've got everybody's contributions, we've updated the plan, got the approval of the examiner, that we then go for a referendum in Oakham and Barleyford. Now, I think things bear in mind, and I was expecting a colleague from Barleyford to be here this evening, that the plan is for Oakham and Barleyford.
Although they don't want it to be like that, that's probably why they're not there this evening.
That was a decision that was made by Rockham County Council. I have to say that Barleyford Parish Council, as they now, have contributed and done an awful lot in terms of building the information into that, about Barleyford into our plan. And indeed, we've done more for Barleyford as well. So they've had every opportunity, I've been to one of their parish council meetings, to talk about the plan. So they have contributed, as we hope you will contribute in the development of this plan. It is a draft, we've got to hear what you've got to say, but this is just one step in the next process.
I think if I can just, we're allowed time, so if I can just, you know, like, when you're, that's all fair enough, but I don't think, as a council, we've had much involvement, I don't think you've looked at, I don't know, the legalities of things. It's like when you say in there that you can only build houses in groups of twenty. Well, what developer's going to even look at that? I mean, that's where, that's where it gets challenged, as being unrealistic.
Sorry, just to cut in on that, it's not we are saying, it's.
But that's how it reads.
Of the survey and the people of Oakham who have said.
But then the plan must, the plan must comply with law. And as I read it, it doesn't, it doesn't even take into consideration the government's current policies on high street development, you know, there's a lot of things you could look at. And it's, and it looks like something that was drawn up in the nineteen seventies, where people don't want progress. I'm not saying we have skyscrapers or whatever, but some of the things look very silly. And also there's personal opinions which shouldn't be in there, like Westgate is, you know, was a blot or whatever the words, I can't remember because I don't have it in front of me, where it should be written as a legal document. So, and, so that's really.
Thank you, Martin.
Actually, you anticipated my commentary, I wanted to know what was going to happen with the feedback you got from us and from other people, what you're going to do with it? Where was it going, now that you've answered that? I've read the document three times. On the whole, I like it. It's a bit aspirational and sometimes a bit vague with its definitions. Joy has done a great job at sort of picking holes in some of the English and things, which is fair enough. It's a bit like officiels to me, this, this language. But apart from that, on the whole, I think it's, it's a reasonable document and understandable, to say, pardon, the little vague things here and there, and a lot of work, obviously, running to it and, you know.
And I think, thank you, Paul, the purpose of this is actually to, is to incorporate changes into the document. So that's why we want to hear your views about the document. Thank you for that.
Yeah, well, we're not entering for the man Booker Prize, we're using other means, so. Can we keep it reasonably plain English?
Sure we can, so people like reading. The plan now is that we have a meeting tonight, we have a steering group meeting next Monday evening, when we're inviting colleagues from Oakham Plan. And it is my hope, no, the challenge for us, is to make sure that whatever we agree tonight is incorporated in the document, which we can then review on Monday. And then that gives a bit of time then to do some more work on it. I've already been speaking to Rockham County Council about meeting to discuss their kind of contribution before it formally goes to Regulation fourteen. This is a raw part of the process. Thank you. Joyce, good evening.
Can I just say, you have done a tremendous amount of work as volunteers. I am sick to death of hearing people criticised. And I've got a lasagna in the oven and I intend to be down back out by half an hour.
You're very kind, girls, thank you very much indeed.
Can I just commend page thirty-one?
Could you just leave the number out for me, please?
Oh, I haven't got to.
Oh, page thirty-one.
Environment for protection of rural areas, you know where I'm coming, we were there last night.
Oh, yes. We were, indeed.
And I, I just think that if we don't do this, we shall lose some of our green open spaces.
Explain where we were last night.
Sorry?
Where were we last night?
The Methodist Church, God bless them.
Well, we're talking about the Oakham Canal.
Oakham Canal. And quite frankly, if we don't get a neighbourhood plan, I can see that some of these green open spaces and green and blue corridors, as they call them, will get swallowed up. And I think it's about time we commend the work that's gone into this. Thank you. My lasagna is still waiting.
There are two other documents which deal specifically with green infrastructure, which is like Claire and all that. So those that haven't already been protected in some way are included in that document. Another document on green spaces and services. And in that, there are three key spaces that we're trying to get protected, which aren't counting. One is the canal, the Oakham Canal. The other is the two spaces next to the arboretum. So if you carry on the end of All Silver Road, it kind of goes the arboretum, there's another green space.
And we have three arboretums in this town.
I'm sorry, on the byproducts. So it's just, there's two other green spaces and it seemed as they're one of the few remaining spaces we've got to see if we can try and protect them. There is some resonance, I think, in neighbourhood planning for protecting large spaces. So I've tried to be a little bit cunning and divide them into two, because there's a river between the two, you know, and to try and see if we can protect those spaces as well.
And of course, you've got Cordon Sainte-Terre across the road, which is supposed to be non-housing, non-building.
That's what the sewer's going under, so I can't imagine if we're trying to build on that.
Oh, absolutely.
So we have tried to couple those bits as well, but they're all separate documents, they've hundreds of photographs in.
Yeah, there are two, one is green spaces, they're green infrastructure, so they are, and they are quite detailed. And they link into obviously eight and nine, sorry, nine and ten of the document. Thank you very much, Joyce. Hello.
Me or Jean? Oh, hello.
Oh, Jean, sorry, yes.
Right, yes, it's a good document. The things in it is about objectives to do with housing, which I do have a personal key mantra in homelessness and housing. I was quite surprised about objective five, because the promote development of family houses with two or more children, two bedroom starter homes, bungalows and supportive housing, retirement plans. Well, actually, as you probably know, in Oakham, we have the Carthys Stone open. We've got another development at the back of Tesco, which is extra support. And additionally, I'm coming through, there is currently another building for people of older age. Where, and obviously we have St John's and Tans, we have spire housing. I struggle to see where there is an actual need of yet more supportive housing in Oakham.
If I can just say on that, my, my view is that not everyone who needs to go to, to live somewhere which has been designed for an older person, can necessarily afford the £18,000 for a one-bed flat, which is what it is behind Tesco's.
Which is why you have spire housing, who in Oakham have the lodge, they have individual bungalows and they have an array of different flats. St John's and St Tans is specifically there for people on low income and not a lot of savings. So I think there is already quite a fair balance. And if you put more older person property out of quality pool, one of the things that they will struggle with, possibly, is actually getting into Oakham. We have a property with twenty-six flats at Cottersmore, which is difficult to let due to the fact of very little transport coming into Oakham. So I think for me, that needs to be looked at more, because it will tip the balance if we carry on just building that sort of accommodation. I don't think there's.
I think balance is the important thing, and it's, if it's come over as weighted that way to the detriment of other sorts of housing, then that's something to be looked at.
Well, it was only a small percentage of people who actually commented. And one of the things that I do through my work is the fact that often people lack knowledge of what there actually is in Oakham, that they can comfortably apply for, because there's always some sort of thinking, but there isn't a lot. But if you map it out, there's actually a lot.
There is new ones up at Barleyford, as well, in the Oakham North West development, there's quite a few blocks.
You're right. I've just wanted to say.
Just to say, see, this isn't our views, what we're doing is reflecting the views of the residents of Oakham and Barleyford, when they completed the big survey, this is what they told us they wanted. So we're really kind of reflecting in the neighbourhood plan, what the residents told us, this isn't our views, every's probably completely different.
But maybe they don't know.
No.
And that's actually coming up through current planning, so it's about.
We're also trying to hit moving toll, because when we did the survey and the consultations, the curb thing had to be built behind there and Barleyford, so you're hitting the moving toll, you're still the problem, they would plan, you're trying to, you know, still moving the local plane, we're trying to keep up the local plan, so you can keep your step with it, it's a challenge, you know.
Maybe, though, about, do people know, is there sufficient already, you know, that's.
I say through my work, I've more than often found that people totally unaware of what there actually is. Because also you quote about, on the waiting list, about the fact that you have a local connection and that sort of thing, well, that's law, that's actually housing law, that deals with people that are homeless and vulnerable, and also people with needs. So Rockham County have to follow that anyway, because that's housing law.
We're looking at, are we looking at section four of the policy series?
Jean, can I just say, when we did the survey and you tried to get people to come to our meetings, we obviously didn't advertise that well, which we did. However, I stood up at the front and was dragging people in, in Tottenham, we're in the marketplace, we're at the markets, with my gazebo, with all the team. And the survey, which we delivered in all the doors, they said everything came up massively about bungalows. And when we met with every builder, not one of them would build a bungalow, not one. However, the people of Oakham want bungalows.
Totally agree.
Exactly, so that's where we're at, that's what we're in, that's the situation we were in. We asked, we did it the hard way by doing the survey, by the way, we didn't have to do a survey. That's the hard way, we went bottom up. It's easy to go top down, which a lot of OMPs, neighbourhood plans, are doing top down. We went the hard way and, like I say, housing and that, no.
It's a key part of people's life.
It is, exactly.
And they often have visions of, not realistic.
Like you said, I think I thought she was going, we look at it.
And the other thing, I want to play you a minute. I totally agree that Oakham is a traditional town and it is appealing for people. But I also feel that there will be other generations beyond us, we will be long gone. And I think that if the town could keep its tradition and history to the areas where it's applicable in the conservation areas, which are very nice, and yes, I think they ought to be kept and probably enhanced. But also, give something for the people that are coming, that, you know, we need a modern approach, we're living here now and they're going to move forward. We need to have that sort of balance in the town, so that people coming in to live later on aren't just left with, obviously, no bond.
That's what I was trying to highlight by saying that it was dated.
Because people say a hundred years' time, they need a heritage too, to inherit from our time up to their days, so I think we need to bear.
Well, they'll have WorldCo building. Well, they'll have WorldCo building.
You think of designing things and where you place them. Fully support what you're saying.
We're not going to be here forever then. The plan is going to go on for a long time. Thank you very much, Jean. Sorry, Martin, what were you going to say?
No, I was, sorry, I was mumbling. I was just saying, that's what I was trying to say about the, when I was saying it's dated and not looking forward. And I, and I, obviously it was picked up criticism. I'm not criticizing what the people have done in your work. I know what you've done in your work, you're leafleting all by foot. And I saw you outside there, but I'm critical of the plan because it looks to me bad. That's all. I'm not criticizing what you've done. Because if I can add just the one thing that jumped out, which seemed quite horrifying to me, is the only aspiration for Oakham is skate park. So that, that, that seemed a bit, a bit odd. So it's things like that. So it's not criticizing you. That's the result of you've explained now from your survey. So, but to me, it doesn't look like other plans I've looked at. And, and it seems sad that the only aspiration was to have Alf's skate park fixed, which is fixed, it was replaced. And, and new ones if possible. It just seemed a bit, there must be more aspiration from residents.
I think you're actually right. And if I think, if I think about the report, it focuses a little too much on the past and not enough on the future. So this is my view, not the view of my colleagues. But my view is that we need a much shorter past. Because actually what we're really interested in is a little bit about where we are now and much more about where we're going to go.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get across.
The fact that it actually, in itself, my only reason is there's too much.
Well, it's 25 pages, isn't it, of the past?
It's about the past. I'm wondering, I also, I take, pick up your point about employment. We mentioned Oakham School in here and some figures. But actually, we don't mention Land End RPC, Buckingham Plastics and then. We mentioned that the Buckingham County Council, but there are obviously.
And we have health and schools.
That's what we should look at. Hello?
I'm probably just echoing most of what's been said, actually. I think it is clear from the report how much involvement from the community that there has been. And I think that is a credit to you all. And, you know, I was a resident when the survey came out and I answered it and I've been involved in this stuff. So I do feel that the report is very reflective of what the community has asked for. And I think the report is very well put together. It's not an easy report to put together and it's never going to be. I worked for Birmingham City Council for a while. So the fact that you've made a report that is understandable is quite an achievement in itself. And it, it is repetitive. It does feel like there's a lot of copy and paste, but that is the nature of these reports. People will pick it up and not want to read page one to 25. They'll want to read section four, but they'll want the information from section one included. So it, it's the nature of the beast. There is going to be a lot of repetition in there. I do like the stuff about the past in the report. I, I think it is important, but I do agree that we need to be looking into the future as well. And I think there are lots of opportunities in there, particularly as a town council, where we can create something good with this neighbourhood plan.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for listening. It was very kind. Thank you. I think, yeah, you're, you're quite right. We need, it's about a balance, I think, in the report. It isn't an easy document to read. I think, as I may have said in an email to you all, the other thing I talked about just now was we having drop-in. There's a lot of work that we need to do now. And one of them is to write in our drop-ins for the local residents to try to make this easy for them to get their minds around. Because it has been written for, as I think I said in my email, a number of different audiences. What we need to do is to make sure when we do the drop-ins, that people are clear about what we're proposing. So the challenge, if you like, for the team is to make those points clear so that people do go away having a greater understanding of what we will be asking them to vote for in the referendum. Because it's an awful lot of.
Planning.
And it's a legal document, you know, it's going to be used by planners and lawyers and so forth. So we need to address that audience. But our challenge will be, or the thing we need to do is to make sure that we can make it. Understandable, isn't it rude for me to say that, but digestible to people like myself, who I'm used to. But thank you very much. And your background at Birmingham could well help you fund all of that, what's there. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to commend your efforts, if it is difficult. I won't repeat what others have said, but I've written down a few headings. You've got to say we can become salt. The chief exec last year when I was meeting her, and a few months ago, was all about this one public estate. I don't know if you've come across this and whether it's still hot. This one public estate. The idea was to get the fires, the medical services all in one ball on the outside. If that's going to happen, it needs to be reflected in the report because it will spare up land and change the dynamics to some extent.
I need to sort of double check, but certainly I've expressed my personal view quite a few times of the, the, the double whammy benefit of, of moving the emergency services. For them, not only to be next to each other, but to be near the Ring Road so they're not held up at their level crossings.
That's right.
But it also, the other positive effect is it's then releasing land which could be used for other purposes, possibly car parking, possibly homes near the centre of the town where people haven't got that accessibility for, for living further away. But something certainly to, to, to review on how it can be worthy, again, in a way that is reflecting what the surveys etc. have already said. Yeah, I think that, I, before I moved here, I lived in Marlow in Buckinghamshire. And that's exactly what they did. They moved the fire station, police station and the ambulance to the edge of the town by the bypass. As you said, clean up land in the town centre.
I think that is fairly common now. My girlfriend works for the police service in Cambridgeshire. And then that's what they've done in Huntingdon. They're all based just on the outskirts.
Same has happened in Kettering. They've got a new police and.
They haven't changed what they're going to use it for after.
It's time now, time to put it, so, so. It's time to address it again. It's not something I'm having conversations with the residents. They're also not thinking of, I mean, they're coming with doctor's surveys and things like that. They don't directly think about.
The plan is to do the hospital and the doctor's survey and everything, and the social services all into one place.
Chris, when.
The meeting's happening.
Sorry.
I think it's a problem, but it's a long way off.
So, I don't remember in the local plan, the county council.
So, Martin, can I just?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, I've got a few headings. We're going around. Community safety. When I was on the planning committee at the county council, every time we did a, saw the development of any signs, they looked at community safety. How did it fit in? I think it's even got worse now because the police are very thin on the ground. They're over the gun. Stuff discussed there. Although the chief constable is now saying we're going to get 100 new officers. Whether we'll get them in Rutland, I don't, I don't know. Now, perhaps not. Do we need to look at CCTV more and so on? That's one heading. There's a group, I don't know if you've met them, brought them together, the Local Strategic Partnership. I think they should be involved in this. A few years ago, they were quite strong, but I think they've sort of gone more on the, on the periphery.
Can you give us contact details on that?
No, I can't. I don't know whether we've got a representative, our souls on it. But you meet the county council, they'll tell you.
Okay.
They'll know the names. We mentioned Oakham School in Uppingham. The school was very involved in this.
I, so, sorry, just, but, you know, I, I did mention this in passing to, to Adam a few weeks ago. But in Uppingham, they have regular meetings between the Uppingham headmaster and the Uppingham mayor. So they can discuss things of mutual relevance. And to my understanding, I don't think there is that sort of relationship between Oakham School and, and Oakham Town Council, which could be a bit of, of Oakham with regards to possibly using some of their facilities, shall we say.
And the headmaster is on Waindown.
Well, it's a good opportunity to, to welcome the new headmaster.
Absolutely.
I'm actually six. We, part of the sports and leisure group. We actually went to every, every sports and leisure, even the Liddon. That's quite interesting. Nice to talk to you. And we did also with regards to Oakham School and because Michael Lea used to work in it and the attitude's totally different with the facilities. You can join the gym, get things out. Here they don't. And they're getting now where you've put them private signs up. You know, it's getting harder. And we went to see them and talk to the headmaster and, and. Yeah, that's about, I'm sorry, I would like it to be better, but we didn't come away with a warm feeling that we're. However, now if you look at the billboards, they're now offering memberships because it was mentioned by yours, she can be, membership in the swimming pool. Which she could never do before. But that's happened since.
I gather the cost is back if you're.
But that was one of the things.
But I think one of the things that we have talked about, about what we would like to see more of in the future is closer in to Oakham School and engaging the school in the activities. Because I think it's a sizable landmass, if you like, of Oakham. It's a big employer, has a big impact on the town. And yet, certainly one of our aspirations is that we should be working more closely with the school.
Sorry, yes. Well, again, my experience at Uppingham, they built a new sports and leisure centre, a new science centre. When they bought the, bought the sports centre, we reminded them they were a charity. And because of that, they had to make the facilities available to the public. And there was a covenant and it has happened, which is fantastic. And.
That's interesting because firstly, one of the things I think is very sad is there's a theatre now, which is not used by the town at all.
Oh, and Uppingham is great.
I believe in you.
The other thing. Oakham and Broome can't have the liaison with Oakham, Oakham School now because the one man who was the best at doing his job as a gardener is now working for Gates's Nursery.
Thank you. Just a final one on that, just a bit of a side really. But on Uppingham Town Council, the boroughs are, was usually a member of the town council, which was a very good link. But that's something for us rather than for you. My next heading is housing in general. You know, I think the balance is about, I, I feel it's important. We don't get way laid by St George's Barracks, Woolhocks, the casters and developments. I mean, I've been to a number of these meetings and our numbers seem to be going up and down. And there's a changing rate. I think we want to stick our ground on it. The plan wants to be the plan. I know we can't say where we're going to build, although the original Uppingham, when we did, we won the battle. So I think, you know, we want a sensible level. You know, the question I raised, does it dovetail into the local plan? I think it does to an extent, but I think we want to hold our corner.
Yes, sorry, just, just on, on that one. What did, did come out from the, from the, the survey which fed into the, the plan is that there was a, a strong feeling that there should not be any development beyond the Ring Road. And, and the size wise, one of the, the key development proposed areas is that between Bury Road and Mashwell Road, around the Co-op area. And if, if they start wading in on that one, to ignoring other sites which are, are available, then, you know, it's gone forever, so to speak. And I feel that should be at the bottom of the list rather than at the top of the list if, if there's to be any, any development. Certainly showing that there is a resistance from the people of Oakham to go beyond the Ring Road for development.
We did think that as part of the local plan, the policy of the local plan consultation process, which you wrote to our county council formally, reflecting the views of residents about what they don't want to see houses built. It was slightly off with what the county council wanted to do. But that's, all we can do is lobby and put our views forward or put residents' views forward in terms of what they want to see. But I know the council has got some, a call for sites they did for land. They selected land, which obviously initially where the residents want to see it. So how that one gets resolved, I'm not quite sure.
Well, what I might say, because George was at the meeting last night, councillor Brown did remind the audience that there was a reluctance to build on the other side of the bypass.
Yes.
So he has reinforced that in a public meeting. So we hope, somebody said that is.
But unfortunately, Chris, money talks in this country and greed is at the top of the list. Sorry.
Well, we know, I've had conversations as chair of the neighbourhood plan steering group with people from East West and the Hans and George Barrack. We're not entirely happy with my response. So anything else?
Well, my last heading is Spire Homes. I was on the partnership board when this all developed. And I don't know if you know the history. Spire Homes took over all the county houses in, in Rutland. And they're doing a good job, I think. You know, they've put a lot of money in. It's important we lean A's for them. And I'd be interested to know if they're planning any more buildings because they're at the affordable end, end, right now. As they get government grants.
I, I did have an unofficial meeting with the area manager of Spire Homes. And I, I think the main thing was, he, he was quite comfortable that there's a reasonable balance between supply and demand. What surprised me is with regards to the, the properties for older people is that there, there are no support facilities with, with Spire Homes. Even the lodge doesn't have any, any carer, anyone living in. They're all independent flats and those.
They do have support. The government stopped supporting people funding. We stopped the ability for housing associations, our local housing government to have people who live on site or alternatively have somebody there every day to do care. But what we have introduced is that each person is assessed. If they need care, then social services will do an assessment and bring in care. So it isn't quite as black and white, perhaps, as nothing, because there is plenty. But also, when those type of accommodation were built, people have a tendency to move more into residential when they've reached about some tier eight. That doesn't apply now. We've got lots of people in the nineties with support going in, maintaining their independence. So although there's been a change, and I accept there has been a change, that's how, how they've got to do it. But it was the government who stopped the supporting people funding to be able to do what they used to do. And Spire is part of the longhouse group. And the longhouse group are now actively, they're already in partnership with quite a number of housing associations, Acier and a lot of them. And what they sent a survey out for is that they want to become all together, which will give them more money and therefore more funding to be able to do more. Sheltered housing is one of the areas that they're going to be relooking at. So there are big changes going to happen there in the not too soon.
There was something, not in the pipeline, but being discussed at some point, that Spire Homes were considering extra development on their site on Zellwood Drive. And demolishing garages and putting more, obviously. One of the things that came out in the big survey was one of the most highly regarded desirable features for new housing was off-street parking. Do you ever drive? It's a serious problem. One of the things that came up was surely these, these garages, which nobody uses because most of them are now unused and unused or they're too small because should be demolished to provide parking for the people who live in those flats. And yet now we learn, in fact, flats, that the garages nearest the footbridge are empty and have been empty for over two years to be. to be demolished to build, to build bungalows apparently. Whether it's all in the end or whether it's going to come to fruition. But really, if you're looking at what your neighbourhood plan, what your big survey was saying, there should be something in there that says, you know, if, if we need off-road parking, even established developments should be, where possible, be looking at these issues. Because Dewan Drive, you know, the farmers said, well, if they had to get through it, they'd simply go down the middle and if they damaged every car on both sides, they would do that. But, but you shouldn't have to have a place where you could not get easily against a, a, a security vehicle through a fire engine or an ambulance through because of the harm.
Policy, it does mention off-street parking.
But that's, that's a case in point where you need to keep your redevelopment of sites where everyone needs to keep an eye on it.
There's certainly a concern in my mind that Dewan Drive has the the risk of being even more of a rat run than it may be at the minute if there was, the development on Brook Road went ahead. And, and if Tim Norton moved and there was something which encouraged more traffic into Tim Norton's site. And it's just not geared towards.
Because he's not actually.
It's within the local plan.
I was, that's what I was talking about, personalised things. I'm not sure that we should be calling it Tim Norton's site. Did you get that? Because he might sell it tomorrow, even in the plan for the next. Can I just point out as well, as a person who rents land from the Spire Homes, they're no longer going to.